Okay, let's call the Pipestone City Council meeting for April twenty first, order please. Uh, could I have a roll call?
Mayor Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Swanson?
Here.
And Councilmember Colbet?
Here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. If you're able, let's all rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions, changes, or deletions to our agenda that was presented? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. The consent agenda contains the following items for approval: the April seventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes, the April seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes, the April eighth, twenty twenty-five local board of appeals and equalization meeting minutes, the Pipestone Baseball, Inc., twenty twenty-five three-point-two off-sale liquor license renewal, the payment of claims listing of bills, and the March twenty twenty-five financial reports. I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Community concerns. Deb, do we have anyone signed in for community concerns?
No one has signed in.
Okay. So we'll move on to bid opening then. The airport hangar bid opening, and that's Silas Palmer from Bolton and Mink will be present to announce the bids received. And I don't know if he's gonna be on Zoom, or is it Travis?
It's gonna be Travis.
Okay, so.
I'll, yeah, we'll take care of this.
So, okay, well, I'll turn this over to you then. Travis, go ahead.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight at six thirty was the time placed for the, um, hangar project or bid opening for the city Pipestone Airport. I'm gonna share my stream. You should be seeing, uh, my webpage from the QSCBN website. Uh, this is the, uh, this is, uh, place where we distribute and solicit and black news for all construction projects. So, for the, uh, hangar project, we, uh, received two bids. That were received from every strong instruction week as well as in next instruction. I will now go in and review and accept them. And now, this will be the bid results. So, the, being from every strong instruction, uh, three thousand dollars, one six. Uh, the apex of construction fit was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, uh, here is every section. Provide these to Silas, and I will review them, and, uh, we will take the recommendation.
All right, well, thank you, Travis. Any questions on that, for anyone? We'll move ahead then. Uh, next up is the reports and airport. Uh, Rob, you're up.
Good evening.
Evening.
The weather is very nice out there, except for wind blows a little bit again. Not bad though.
Yeah.
The, um, I talked to a guy named around Manson, Manson, from the Department of Paramedics. In our AWOS system, it's, uh, supposed to go through a pre-construction meeting within the next two weeks. That must be the, um, this is the spring wave. That's what they call it. And then I got another deal here from the ADSB, I'll get the Evacuating Department Surveillance Broadcast System. And they're dropping the AT&T telephone system off of that big tower we got out there. What that means to me, I don't know. Don't have a clue. I didn't know AT&T was even attached to that, because we'd never do anything with it up there at all, that big tower. So, other than that, everything was going good.
Good.
So. Any questions from anybody? Nobody.
No, no questions.
Okay.
Great, great.
Haven't started calling yet, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, it won't be long though.
Nope. So grass is starting to get flawed on that run, on that long runway.
Yeah.
And they're still trying to figure out when the water leak is at, on that water line. Which.
Who, whose water line is that?
That belongs to the city. We don't know if they, when they, when they run that, that gas line down to the north, down to Hoard, we had a leak after that. But the thing is, I've been told that's somebody down about two feet, and the water line is down six feet. If that be the case, they shouldn't even made, but they did get close to the fire hydrant. And what that means, I don't know. They're gonna let it soak up real good again, and see if they can locate that leak. It's gotta be found after.
Yeah.
Now, will you be rolling that? When, when, will you be, do you need, is there a need to roll that, um?
We just did.
You just did, okay.
Just did.
Okay, great. Somebody asked me that today, so I was gonna pass that.
Roll it. I talked to, um, Mike Blumdahl.
Great.
So, and we used a big flat roller instead of the, the wheel, the turned one. The wheel turned one, like, if they go too fast, it bounces. And when it bounces, it leaves all the little ridges in there. And we peel them off.
I'll bet.
Other than that, that's about it.
All right, well, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Economic Development Authority, Justin.
Evening, um. Just got one quick announcement. Preferred Resource Group has moved into that suite two down here in the hall. Looks pretty nice down there, the way he's got it fixed up. Open for business now. He's having an open house on May first. And, uh, with him moving in and me switching sides of the hall here, that we're completely called out. Good problem. Um, but if anybody's still looking to start a business, make sure you stop in anyway, we can get you set up. Um, it's kind of been grant season lately, um, working on a few different projects there. We were recently awarded twenty-five thousand from the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program through the SRDC to conduct, uh, energy audits on city-owned facilities and then find solutions to help save on our utility bills. We're still working on a real childcare innovation program. Working on different projects to attract and retain family businesses in town. You know, it's important that there are important businesses too, not just babysitters. We're also doing a childcare one-on-one event on May first at two P M, and again, again, at six P M at Myers Community Library. Um, we're gonna have licensure people there, financial professionals, educational people there. Answering anybody's questions if they're interested in starting a childcare business and where to start, and how to get, how to get on and roll. Uh, we'll have our second annual childcare providers appreciation event is on May eighth. We, we just had a whole list of donors again tonight at our earlier meeting that have been gracious enough to support that project as well. And then the Southwest Initiative Foundation is taking care of the catering and the activities. And we're gonna have all their, our things served by tomorrow. Bring someone to do that. Then, um, as of today, there's only two lots remaining at Southwest Acres. For the great low price of free, you build a house within two years, you get your fifteen thousand dollars back. Um, Real Estate Retrievers has those lots up on their website, and I hope that you want to step in. They're nice job marketing those too.
Did they sell the last lot, those state retrievers, or?
We did.
Okay.
It would work for that for a little.
All right, well, good.
And then last week, we learned, uh, Steffi and I have been selected to participate in the Minnesota Housing Partnerships Emergency, Emerging Development Institute. And, uh, their website describes that as, uh, two main components. The first part is a learning track. We're gonna work with their, uh, program in other cities to learn about different developments. And then the, um, second half, if feasible, will be the emergency developer in, um, emerging developer in, uh, possibly taking out projects, building a house or a small apartment or something like that. Help from the city and community members. That's all I got.
All right, any questions for Justin? We just completed our EDA meeting, so we're all pretty fresh on everything, so, thank you, Justin. Uh, Museum, I don't see Susan. Housing redevelopment, I don't see Tammy. Senior Center, you're up.
Hi, thanks for allowing us to speak. I'm Steve Wheat from the Senior Center Treasurer. Um, we've just kind of begun the year, but we already have one hundred and sixteen members, I guess, for the first quarter of the year. That makes us happy that we're that far along already. Um, cards, dominos, pool, exercise class, pinnacle, and maybe more, just a few of the things that continue to be done at the Senior Center. I know a lot of it is repetitive, but we're continuing with new people, which is good. It's, it's, it's nice that, um, we've had many members over the years, and it's starting now that this year, I think we've got twelve new members, which is, which is nice, yeah. So that, that brings in some new blood, brings in some new ideas, which is great. Uh, we had a big, um, St. Patrick's Day party, and I think there was fifty-three people that attended that. And we're having a sprinkling, um, Wednesday. It's kind of an Easter party, but it's, we're calling it a sprinkling. The Easter Bunny may show up, you never know. It's very, very possible. Um, this coming Sunday is Dad's Belgium Waffles, and, uh, we have sold three hundred and forty tickets so far, which is, which is very good. And tickets are available at the door if anybody wants to attend that. And the, uh, best news that we got, we received this morning, is that we finally have a coordinator hired for Pipestone to be able, so that we're going to be able to do senior dining and Meals on Wheels. The Meals on Wheels will continue to be as what they have in the past, but the newest thing will be that we will be having congregative dining at the Senior Center. And they plan to start that about the middle of May, once this coordinator gets more oriented to the business and stuff. And it is a local gal that was hired, so she should do very good. She'll know a lot of people and be able to hopefully get this senior dining going.
Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah, it's been two years in the making.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask. How long has it been since we had the, uh, congregative dining?
Two years.
Two years, so, yeah.
Yeah, they've had a couple of people hired, and they just, they haven't stayed, but I, but this one, this one. And we haven't, we weren't able to start the senior dining in between, because they just weren't here long enough, but I think that's why, that's why I'll be here today, so, yeah.
So the Dad's Belgium Waffles, that's a fundraiser.
That's a fundraiser, yeah.
That's your fun, is that a major fundraiser?
That's our major fundraiser.
So that, that's something that we should all get out to, and, uh, I know that's a good breakfast. I've been to, to a lot of them, so.
And you know, I think this is our third year. We keep moving it. Every year we get prompt. And this year, we have an added benefit that I think we get confirmation in every church in the, in the county.
Along with, yeah.
What is it, Steve?
Okay.
Uh, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty is when it's being served, so.
Good.
Come on down.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Any question for Steve?
No.
No?
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for your support.
In Chamber of Commerce, you're up.
Hi, Erica Holt, Executive Director of the Pipestone Area Chamber in Torvom. Um, so, to report since last time I was here, which I think was in January, is we, uh, well, it's been the season of celebrations in Pipestone, so we've had our, all of our annual, um, bingoits and benefits for all various organizations, pheasants, hospice, whatnot, and the chamber's no different. So, um, we held our Chamber Annual Awards, um, celebration. Uh, it was St. Patrick's Day as well, given that it was Friday right before St. Patty's Day was on at the Country Club. We had about eighty folks there, different, um, business and nonprofit folks, um, there. All out to support, um, our various nonprofits, businesses, and individuals, all those people that we want to recognize and raise up and thank them for their investment in our community, for helping it grow, and for making it a great place to live and adding to all of our family life. We added two, um, new awards this year, which I'm really excited about, in keeping with kind of recognizing all of the components that as a chamber, we want to, um, support and lift up. And those two new awards this year were, um, Educator of the Year. And that was won by Nancy Stephen Holler, um, from Pipestone Area Schools, longtime fourth grade teacher. Um, just a quick little note on that. I mean, she, as you, uh, probably, um, read in the paper, they did a great article about her as well. Um, she retired for a whopping whole two weeks, and then was called to come back, and then answered that call, and, um, she received a lot of nominations, as did many of her teachers, but well, well-deserving for our inaugural Educator of the Year award, so that was exciting. And Lyle was able to keep it a surprise, which was very impressive, because she's a little confused why her kids were at the banquet when, but we just said they won tickets. Um, so then our second new award was Public Servant of the Year, and so, um, and that is a new category for us as well. Um, trying to recognize all the folks, um, who are, uh, employees, paid employees, who are making our community great. And we, that could be anyone working for the city, for the county, for, um, any of our emergency, um, you know, uh, first responders, um, all of those folks, so anyone who's kind of a public employee. And the winner this year of our inaugural one was Wayne Drew, very well deserved, um, through his almost ten years of service at the county, um, there, keeping it nice, and he was great to work with, with two water tower hospitals as well, and making all those facilities beautiful, but also great, um, putting on magazines and did a, um, a great job supporting us with our Christmas care program, serving our, um, our families and kids in need over the holidays, and then, of course, over forty years of service with our Pipestone County Fair. So, um, if you see either of those two, make sure you congratulate them if you were there that evening. So, um, they are, um, well, well-deserving and great inaugural winners of those two. And then, of course, we, not to, uh, forget our, our regular awards, which are, um, we have four of them, so now we have six. Uh, the first one was our Nonprofit of the Year, another well-deserving recipient, and that was the American Legion Family, consisting of the Michael Boop, those six, the Sons of the American Legion, and the American Legion Auxiliary, all three of those entities, those divisions, working very hard, um, for our community, for our veterans, for the families of our veterans, and then, um, of course, putting money back into the community and reinvesting through their flipping eggs, or what do they call it, cracking eggs, or, I said cracking heads, they're not cracking heads, they're cracking eggs, but, um, and, uh, frying up, uh, lots of, uh, funds for a lot, especially a lot of youth programs. Um, so they were the Nonprofit of the Year. Um, our Chamber Volunteer of the Year went to Melissa of Corkdale, so the director at, um, Ridgeview Estates, um, she is, this award goes to someone, um, she happens to also be a board member, but it can go to anyone, um, who just really helps us fulfill our mission. Um, uh, recognizing that time is money and, and time helps, and she, she certainly goes above and beyond, and we're thrilled to represent her. Um, and recognize her. Uh, Small Business of the Year is, uh, we break up our businesses kind of in, in two categories. Uh, ten or fewer, um, we call just Small Business of the Year, ten or fewer FTEs, um, and Large Business is eleven or greater. And that's just, we kind of looked at a number and split them so that everyone has a, a more fair chance of winning, and also so we can recognize even more businesses. Um, the Small Business of the Year, um, went to a very popular place, um, and probably popular with, um, our clothing places too, because I know certainly, I think I've gained a few pounds from, since she's opened, but that would be Sassy Cakes by Ashley. And so Ashley Nordmeyer, um, has her bakery, and so she, she won Small Business of the Year, and we're very, uh, proud of what, what she has done, moving the good example of when you started, she started with a cottage food license, and then graduated up, and now she's in a brick-and-order, um, building, um, and, uh, and has employees, and then also, um, you know, she's working on now trying to to get back that twenty-four hour access with a little mini mart, so working on the licensing for that. Um, the, and then our final award was the Large Business of the Year with eleven or more full-time equivalents, and that went to First Bank and Trust. Um, longtime great community supporter, um, and chamber supporter. Um, some of the things we look at, um, we, anyone can nominate, um, for our awards, and then we take all of those together and then discuss them as a board, and then, uh, and then vote on them. So that's how that process works, but they can come from anywhere in the community, um, members, community members, uh, chamber members, I should say, community members, um, whomever, and then we bring it back to our board, and then go through each one, and, and, uh, and on several of these, we had a lot of close calls, so we had many, many rounds of voting on a few of them. Um, we look for things on like exceptional performance, and, you know, kind of one or more of the areas, either building or product expansion, that's creating a positive impact on the local business community, either by generating new jobs, or, uh, increasing sales, or just enhancing the aesthetic value of their property. Um, dedicated service to the general community through consistent support, um, of specific or diversified community endeavors that are enhancing the overall quality of life for all of us, our workforce, our residents, everyone, and our visitors. Um, dedicated service through the community through consistent support, um, um, and dedicated activity in chamber events, committees, activities, various programs or initiatives. Um, if they've been a recipient of an industry award or other type of recognition of leadership, um, superior business development or marketing, um, growth history, or on the flip side, you know, um, longevity, um, consistently providing exemplary customer service and/or superb quality of their goods or, um, services. And then also, um, just any kind of new or innovative ideas for either the community or the chamber, um, just basically exemplifying the spirit of that award. So, um, very proud of all those recipients, like we all are each year. It's the hardest task, I think, that we have to do every year, because we would like to give all of them, there are multiple, multiple, um, potential recipients in each of the categories every year, but those were the ones for the twenty twenty-four, for our ninety-eighth annual celebration and awards. Um, speaking of awards, United Way of Pipestone County, uh, recently awarded their twenty twenty-five Carrying Award to Cobhorns. Um, so congratulations to Cobhorns on receiving that. That is the third, um, Carrying Award, um, that they have distributed here locally. Um, and then, and, um, nice, that bats up nicely for this Wednesday at ten A M. First State Bank Southwest, um, will be, uh, the host of our next Chamber Coffee. And that is also where they will be holding their twenty twenty-five Community Pride Award as ceremony. So again, that's this Wednesday, in two days, um, well, two days from tonight, depending on when you're watching it online, but, um, at ten A M, the ceremony will be at ten oh five, so gives everyone a chance to get in there, grab something, and then they'll, they'll start. Um, and we just really encourage and welcome anyone to attend. The recipient this year is Roger Rashkey, very well deserving. Um, Roger, of course, um, many of you know from the Pipestone County Food Shelf and all of his work there, as well as, um, he's been our treasurer for eons for Pipestone Quanis, and all the work he does there with keeping us, um, keeping us on track and international Quanis happy with all of our records, and, and that's a thankless job, but, uh, and many, many more things that Roger does. So, we invite everyone to come to that. You do not need to be a chamber member. You do not need to, you know, have some affiliation with the Food Shelf or Quanis, just any, or the bank, anyone can come. Um, the more the merrier in recognizing and holding up that volunteer in our community. Networking for the chamber, um, that kind of brings us on the topic of networking that just wanna kind of put out there. We've heard some different things, and just wanna clarify that all of our chamber networking events are open to everyone. So, that is any business, any nonprofit, um, any community member, any retired person, um, whomever, um, any young parent, um, and if you bring your kid, that's probably fine too, just, you know, um, we're, it's just Tom and I are watching them, so, but they, but weren't changing any diapers. Uh, but you are welcome to come. I mean, we truly want it to be a community affair, and so that includes any of our chamber groundbreakings and chamber ribbon cuttings, because those are truly celebrations where we want the whole community there. Um, our chamber coffees, after hours, tours of businesses, et cetera, so, and if anyone ever has a question there, welcome to contact me or Tom, and we're happy to clarify, so. And we can also rectify that. You can become a chamber member too, so we can help with that. Um, community resources, um, speaking of kind of community resources for the chamber, I was recently at, um, I've gone to a few trainings and, and made aware of some resources that we'll be sharing through our email newsletter, um, for, for various kind of, uh, uh, resources available, both to nonprofits. Swift just did a, uh, an all-day, uh, kind of conference, um, trying to think of the name now. It's like navigating currents or something, but essentially, it basically was sort of like a state of the nonprofits in Minnesota, and all the various kind of, um, uh, government, non-government, and private, um, funding sources, resources, training, um, training options, et cetera, and that was a hundred percent, um, free and sponsored through Southwest Initiative Foundation. Does a great job at, at those trainings, so I'd encourage people to attend those if you're involved in any type of, of, um, nonprofit, or, or they also have their, their economic development and business arm as well. But at that conference, um, uh, one of the individuals in one of our breakout sessions was talking about how their community has a community concierge services. And so, you know, I was kind of curious, I'm like, I wonder what that is. And so we were listening, because it's a, it's a, um, full-time position, benefits, paid position. And, uh, when they got through describing it, um, you know, I sort of, I said to Tom, and I'm like, I go, so essentially, the chamber, that's what we do here. So, um, so you guys all have a community concierge service for the low price of zero, so, so feel free to use us. That includes any kind of questions about who are the contact for this, what are some options on this? Um, I'm interested in, in doing X, Y, Z. Is there someone working on that, you know? That's, they have a main person that's doing that, and that's great work, but, um, we are already doing that and happy to do that. Um, so if you have inquiries, um, and many people do take advantage of this. Um, Steve, the burly boy, Steve in the back there, um, takes care of that by having, uh, one of those slides on the, um, on the community access channel, saying, you got a question, call the chamber, and people take that very literally, with any question. And so, um, we encourage that, emails, uh, I get a lot of Facebook private messages, and it follows the day or night. Um, direct in-person inquiries, of course, you can always come talk to us, um, uh, social media, and also on our website. And then on that website, additional community resources, um, our, our community events, calendar, that is for anyone, not just members, and, and, and we also encourage you to call us sometimes, you know, we, we've got a lot of hats we wear, and so we don't always get it immediately up there, so if you're looking to try and figure out when is a good date to have an event, for people in the listening public there, just, um, you know, feel free to call us. That doesn't mean you're checking in with us, or that we have to give you permission. It's just kind of alerting you, here are some things going on or not going on, and so that your event and other people's events can be successful. It doesn't mean we're telling you when you can hold it. It's just so that people, you know, then you find out, oh my goodness, we've just now split our audience, so. Um, so we're happy to do that. Just pick up the phone and give us a call. Tom does a great job making sure that that is updated. Um, we also have a job board. More people are learning about this. We're getting a lot more hints on that, and there are, um, that is free for any job seeker in town. So you know there's a lot of social media. Who's hiring? Well, it's on there twenty-four seven, so, um, that is a free service, so, uh, there's links to how you apply. Whether it's, we make sure the one thing that we do ask to be, to have businesses, put, put it on there, is we ask our members to make sure that it says whether it's full or part-time, because that's important, doesn't wanna, don't wanna waste their time if they're looking in need, full-time employment. Um, so that's another resource. And then the one that's probably the least maybe known by the general public, um, although people do use it, but I think the one we'd like to kind of focus on, because more people are learning of those first two, is our directory. And so that is the directory of, um, businesses and nonprofits, and on each one of those, it's like a mini website for each one of those entities. So it's got, you know, how you, the driving directions, which are landmark, landmark place, like, you know, it's on the, you know, Cross from Harman Park or something like that. Um, but then it also has a, uh, Google map that just one-touch, like, if you're driving, we'll pull it up right for you, um. Uh, same with one-touch coloring, um, any social media sites they have, it automatically links if they're hiring, write in that same thing, um, uh, general information, um, whatever they've provided us with, some photos and, and whatnot, their address, um, ours, if they give us ours, so. So that is another great resource. Um, Justin kind of talked about childcare, so, uh, the chamber is involved in that as well, so just wanna, um, hold up this flyer so people see it around. Um, this is what he was talking about with the childcare one-on-one, and just wanna, you know, point out the presenters include the Southwest Minnesota Opportunity Council, Childcare Aware of Minnesota, and Southwest Health and Human Services, along with, I know, Teresa Wimble, and maybe some other childcare providers who are long-term experienced, are generous to give up their time and their expertise. They have a choice. They're the exact same session, just, it's just made convenient, whether it's better for you to come during the afternoon or evening. This is for anyone who's ever thought. It's not that you're standing on the dotted line, but it's just like, gosh, you know, I like kids, I wanna take care of them, and, um, that would be a good option for me. I, but I don't even know, what is it like? Where do I start? What resources are available? Are the resources available? Um, you know, this would be, this would be great. Um, there's gonna be some refreshments there, um, it's open to any. there's going to be some refreshments there. Um, it's open to anyone, whether they're in Pipestone County or outside of Pipestone County. And I just want to kind of point out at the bottom, you know, we have a lot of rural childcare innovation workforce. Um, Subcommittee is the one that's kind of working on this and, um, folks involved. And it's a great collaborative effort. So that's, um, you know, kind of a shout out both to the, of course, the City EDA, um, applying for the grants and then being a member of this committee. Um, we are a member of it as a Chamber Minors Community Library, which is who's hosting it, uh, the Pipestone Area Schools. Um, Clint's involved in this as well. We'll be having some more events, um, later in the year. And also, um, of course, the city in general and PCMC. So, um, a good example of the community working together, um, on one specific type of business and trying to attract, um, and, uh, entertain those and, and get the information out for people who might be interested in doing that line of work and be, be their own boss. Um, so that is what's going on in the childcare realm. Um, tourism, of course, where this is all the time where we're placing our ads, updating regional and state websites, all those kind of, um, nothing fancy for me to show you here, but important work for people to be able to find all the great things that we have here in terms of attractions and events going on. So, working on that. Um, for events for the community coming up, a couple of things, um, right away this Friday is the Pipestone Sportsman's Club Annual Banquet. Five o'clock is the social, six-thirty dinner. That is their, um, their main fundraiser, their annual fundraiser throughout the year. Of course, I'm sure they will accept donations at any time, um, like most nonprofits, uh, but, um, that is a big one for them. They'll have all kinds of games, you know, raffles, uh, um, a delicious dinner. It's going to be cooked, I believe, by the Pipestone Pork Producers. Um, so, um, a great, uh, opportunity. And they, they're going to tell you all about what they've done over the last year in terms of developing the community gun range and all of their plans as they enter into their next phase. Um, so be sure and get that. Oh, and if you don't have your tickets, if you know of or remember, you can get it from them. Um, or you can pay at the door as well. Uh, and then finally, just kind of general community events coming up. Um, so this, the weekend of May, uh, kind of that Thursday, May 1st through, um, through Sunday, the 4th, there's a lot of things happening in town. So hopefully there'll be a lot of new faces. If you see folks, be sure and greet them. Um, but also, um, this is a good time to come to Pipestone or to stay in Pipestone if you live locally, because there's a lot of things going on. So first, Thursday, May 1st through Friday, uh, Thursday, May 1st, Friday, May 2nd, and Saturday, May 3rd are the citywide rummages. So, um, if you'd like to take advantage, Pipestone Publishing has a promotional package, um, it's $25, um, and we help them promote as well. And so that's a good way to get it out there, the word about yours. If you don't want to have one at your house or you're in an apartment or somewhere where it's not convenient, uh, First Lutheran Church has spaces available, so you can contact them. Um, on Saturday, they have, uh, they're going to open up their fellowship hall to the public that they can come there and have a place where they can, where you can have your rummage right there. And then that's the side benefit of you don't have to worry about weather. Um, so then also that same weekend then, which would be that Saturday, so what day is that? The second, is the Clolier by Dawn's, um, annual, uh, Spring. She's calling it this time, the Hats and Heels Style Show, and that will be at Pipestone Performing Arts Center. Uh, that's the Kentucky Derby Weekend for those of you who maybe don't follow that, but for those of you that do, you already knew that. At 10:30, so if you wear a hat, you get extra prizes. At 10:30 AM, uh, she's going to have music and, uh, mint juleps, um, I have in quotes, you know, uh, uh, and then, uh, a personal jockey that you can come meet. And I have a suspicion who I think that is. Um, so, um, so you can come see her and have your picture taken with, uh, with very handsome personal jockey. Uh, then 11 o'clock will be local models and whatnot, and then a shopping event. And that's always a nice time to come out right before Mother's Day. You can get your outfits or you can treat the women in your life by just handing them a credit card and saying, have fun. Um, so the, uh, and then also that weekend is the Al Ocklin Singer Show. So they have moved their show back, uh, one week, um, and forward, however you look at it. Um, so that's good. Hopefully it will not snow that way. And also, um, you know, it's a nice thing. You can come to town, you can shop some sales, you can go around over to local businesses, get something to eat, go to a style show, and then go be entertaining. Their theme is summertime, here we come. And that is Thursday, May 1st, um, Friday and Saturday, 7:30, Sunday, March 4th, at 2 o'clock matinee. So, um, they have a very fun show. Uh, I talked to Roger Olivier and he says that you'll know a lot of, of the songs. Um, so they're really hoping a lot of people come out. And then kind of looking forward some, um, talked about a lot of dates in, in January, but a few ones that we didn't know at the time last when I was here, which is relatively to a request later in this meeting, is our car cruises. Um, we're going to have three. On, we have the Chamber, is a Chamber Car Cruises, um, one in Maine, that will be downtown. And, uh, with our very own UE Maine, we'll do the live entertainment for music. Uh, in June, of course, Pipestone Cruisers have their car show, which is part of Water Tower. Um, in July, there's going to be three car cruises, um, within our county. Um, we are not hosting any one of the three, but you got plenty of options. So, um, Edgerton and Jasper and Dulmo are going to do, um, one each. Um, so lots of opportunities in, in July. August 7th will be in Hatfield, um, and we're going to have the Band Sub Detour. Uh, will be our next Chamber Car Cruiser. And our final Chamber Car Cruiser will be September 4th. And that will be back downtown, um, with, uh, DJ Mylon Ray, who keeps telling me he's retiring, but we keep talking him into it. So, um, so he, he will at least be there that chance. So you don't want to miss that. And, and our, um, Hall of Fame DJ, um, for South Dakota and Iowa. We need to get a petition for Minnesota, I think. Um, and then Water Tower Festival, uh, just kind of a quick note on that, um, the, that is coming up, obviously. Um, it's always surrounded the last Saturday of, of June, now that we're, uh, post-COVID. And, uh, so we've officially made it, whatever the last Saturday is, that's the weekend Water Tower is. So this year, the parade will be on Saturday, June 28th. The parade theme is classic toys. Got a couple of questions about that, like what's classic? Well, it depends on what you feel classic is. So, um, for some of us, that could be, you know, um, Raggedy Ann and Andy and, and Smurfs and Tonka Trucks and, um, Rock'em Sock'em Robots. And, you know, all those kind of fun things for others. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's Tinker Toys or, you know, or, uh, uh, I don't know, rubber balls or, you know, uh, little toy boats or, you know, whatever, but it's just classic toys. We always try and pick a theme that's going to appeal to kids and that's family-friendly. So, um, be sure and participate in that. And then for those of you that are really competitive, which we do have some of those, um, which is awesome. That makes our events great. We did also pick our Chamber Chili Cook-Off, a November theme, and that is going to be Thursday Night Live, which is like, um, uh, your favorite characters and skits from a different day's nightlife. So, um, so that will be in November. That's what's going on at the Chambers.
Well, good. Okay. Any questions from the council? No. Thank you, Erica, for your efforts and don't leave. I've got just a couple of, uh, legal announcements here and then we'll have you do your, uh, requests. So, um, I need to introduce Ordinance 165, the Forest Series, and that's an ordinance for the city of Pipestone, vacating all part of the plotted 16-foot-wide east and west alley lying between blocks one and two Crawford's Edition in the city of Pipestone, according to the plat thereof on file and of record in the office of the County Recorder, Pipestone County, Minnesota. We had our public hearing on, uh, April 7th on that. And we'll be considering this on, uh, May 5th at our next council meeting. So, uh, I will introduce this ordinance at this time. Also, Ordinance, uh, 166, Forest Series, that's an ordinance amending chapters 50 and 91 of the city code regarding the regulations of utility service lines in the city. And, uh, through past discussions with, uh, staff and the councils, determined we need to kind of update that code. And I'm sure Joel will give us a better presentation, or somebody will at our next council meeting too. So we'll introduce that. Uh, we're basically just making things a little bit easier for Joel to do his job and, uh, updating those ordinances. So, um, that will be introduced and then considered at our May 5th meeting. Okay, so next up is new business and request for, uh, Chamber Water Tower Festival. Erica?
So this is a pretty, um, standard request. Um, it will be the 36th Annual Water Tower Festival this year. It'll run from Friday, June 27th to Sunday, June 29th. And we are requesting your permission and assistance to, um, produce the following for the Water Tower Festival weekend. On Friday will be kids', uh, kids' night again this year, um, and a community dinner. And so we're requesting some, some, uh, you know, picnic tables, garbage cans, those, those types of things that are laid out there, as well as permission to close that block, um, 100 block of South Puyata from Main Street to Second Street Southwest slash Southeast from 2:00 to 9:30 for that community burger feed and kids', um, pedal pole, as well as the junior ambassador contest. Um, Saturday, uh, June 28th is the, with regard to the parade specifically, um, the parade ferment, um, parade again, standard time, 10:00 AM, lineup, 9:30, um, and then requesting some, um, assistance with the no parking signs on the places we have indicated to help us keep that parade safe, um, and block those, um, through traffic from entering the route. Um, additionally, on Saturday then, with, uh, most of the events that are kind of up near the courthouse lawn, uh, then request to close Second Avenue Southwest from 7:00 to 3:30, um, from Third Street Southwest to Fifth Street Southwest. Um, for the Pipestone Cruisers Car Show as well. It's right adjacent to the area, um, on the courthouse lawn. Um, and then, uh, 36 picnic tables, um, under the large tent, assistance with the tent, um, and some garbage cans. Um, and then that evening, um, that evening, Saturday night. So again, this is just like last year, the, the street dance is on Saturday night. And so that will be, um, uh, yes, that's the band undercover, and that's from 9:01 AM. We're requesting, um, to close the street and then have those no parking signs, along with some picnic tables, garbage cans, and, uh, the city's flatbread tree to use. Um, I guess I did mention that earlier, but, um, also on kids' night, um, for our stage for our little junior ambassadors to get their practice communicating and to select our junior parade ambassadors. And then on Sunday, retaining, um, a few of those picnic tables and some garbage cans be left there, um, for the, um, Porshone Church, and then anything the Miss General Association has planned on that, um, including their community-wide worship. And sometimes they'll do a music event as well.
Okay. So hope we got some good weather and have a successful water tower. So I'd entertain a motion for those requests.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. And then next up is the Chamber Car Cruise.
Thank you. And so I just gave the dates. So, um, so relative to, to the city council here, we would be requesting, um, your permission and assistance, um, for two car cruises, one on Thursday, May 29th, and one on Thursday, September 4th. Same identical request, just different days to close the 100 block of West Main Street from 4:00 to 8:00. Um, and then, uh, some public works assistance in terms of bringing the barricade street closed signs, a few picnic tables and garbage cans down like we, like we always do.
Keep Mike busy.
Yes. Well, we help them while putting them out, but that helps us to get them at least downtown.
Okay, all right.
They do a great job. And they do a great job lifting those picnic tables, because I'll admit, I'm not very good at that.
All right, and entertain a motion for the, uh, Chamber Car Cruise request.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-26, this resolution accepts the following donations. The Pipestone J.C.'s have donated $700 to assist with DJ and daycare at the Aquatic Center. And so I'd like entertain a motion to accept this, uh, generous donation from the Pipestone J.C.'s.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? Discussion. So again, thank you to the J.C.'s and, uh, it won't be long, the Aquatic Center will be opening up. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries. Consider a new assessment policy. And over the past year, we've been talking about that assessment policy. In fact, it's been more than a year, I'm sure. And, uh, we've certainly come up with, uh, some great ideas and, uh, Travis, I know, has been working hard on it. And, uh, we fine-tuned it. Uh, we're at the point where it's time to, uh, decide whether we want to move ahead with it or not. So, um, I'd entertain a motion for the final draft of policy to be reviewed by the council at our special work session we did at April 7th. And, uh, we need to approve the policy. So any questions on the assessment policy as it's been presented?
I will, we, uh, we accept, uh, yeah, new assessment policy.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions or discussion? And like we said at our, uh, work session, you know, this is something that, uh, we need to look at probably more often than once every 20 years. And, uh, hopefully this brings about up to speed where, uh, we can be a little bit more efficient with, uh, our projects and, uh, um, work more closely with the, uh, citizens too and what their assessments would be. So, the motion's on the floor. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Uh, West Central Environmental Consultant Set Engineering Firm is working on behalf of the MPCA and is looking to perform work in the area near the southwest corner of the liquor store. They will be doing some sonic boring and installing a test well. Um, they're asking for access to that and an agreement to allow them on the city property. And they'll be monitoring that well in the future. Um, do we know how long that well will be monitored? And, uh, what will it actually look like? Do we know?
Well, it says here, the operation of the monitoring well includes one access to the property to construct sampling with portable equipment, which will occur approximately every three months on two to three occasions. And I'm not, so it's going to be there for a while. Apparently there was a release of petroleum from a tank owned by the former Chandler co-op site, which is right next to the liquor store. And so they would need to monitor that, that place for a while.
So I'm assuming it's some type of-
It's going to be for a little bit. It's going to be for a little bit.
Some type of, uh, pipe they'll install into the, uh, parking area there. And, uh, gives them access to, to the underground and see if there's any contamination.
It'll look like the ones around the old factory cleaner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then when they're done, when the site is closed, the agreed well cover will be saw cut and removed. And then they'll return the surface to what it was.
All right. Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to allow, uh, West Central Environmental to, uh, complete that work.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Declaration of Surplus Property and Public Works has been requesting to declare a 2015 John Deere 1600 Series 2 Wide Area Mower with 2,055 hours surplus property. And that's, uh, a mower that they can, they want to replace. And, uh, this will allow them to, uh, put it up for bids on the internet or at least advertise it and see what's, anyone's interested in it.
Yep, online auction like-
Online auction, okay. All right, so I'd entertain a motion to approve that as surplus property.
So move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions? Discussion. You probably drove this one at one time. You know it's wore out.
It's a very large mower. There's somebody that needs something for vintage property.
Oh, okay.
And it isn't worn out, no.
Okay, well, good to know. All right. So motion on the floor and, uh, been it seconded? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries. Approve the HRA Council Liaison Membership Resignation, and Scott no longer wants to serve on the council or on the, uh, liaison for the Housing Redevelopment Authority. And thank you for your efforts. And, uh, we'll move ahead from there. So I'd entertain a motion to accept Scott's resignation.
So move. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Consider HRA Commission Member Appointment, and, uh, I'm requesting, uh, Patty Peterson, uh, to be on the Housing Redevelopment Authority Commission. She was recommended by, uh, Tammy. And, uh, I think she'd be an excellent member on that commission. And so I'm appointing her with approval of the council. But entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. And then we also had some resignations on our Human Rights Commission. Uh, that was Gabriel Yellowhawk. He's been serving on that commission since the very beginning and was a chair, uh, for many years. And, uh, did an excellent job. He just, life changes, it gets busy. And, uh, Julie Dolman was also a member from the very beginning, and, uh, she told me the same thing. She said, uh, just getting too busy to, uh, fit everything in. And, uh, both of them are certainly welcome back on that commission at any time. They did such great work. And, uh, so I'd entertain a motion to, uh, approve their resignations.
So move. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Consider appointment to the Human Rights Commission, and Gabriel Dupre, um, she was our, uh, uh, ex-official member. She was a liaison from the, uh, um, National Park on our council, or on the, uh, commission, I should say. And so she couldn't be a voting member, but certainly was, uh, interested in the work that that commission's been doing. So she's resigned as the liaison for the National Park Service, so she'd be, could become a voting member. And, uh, I'm recommending, uh, um, appointment of, uh, Gabriel Dupre, Gabby, to the, uh, Human Rights Commission Member. Entertaining motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Very good member.
Oh, she will be. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries. Next up is closing comments, and, uh, do we have any closing comments from the, uh?
I just put it everybody's sight here. Um, it's called High and Plain Sight. Um, the Coalition Pipestone, Coalition of Pipestone, Pipestone Area Coalition, um, had sent this out. And so I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It's called High and Plain Sight. You're actually supposed to go, Pipestone Community Presentation is on Tuesday, September 30th. It's off their ways at 6:15, and you're supposed to scan here on this barcode. And so just put it on your radar. I'll remind you again. But, um, apparently they've been sharing these and we haven't been getting them. So I wanted to make sure that I, make sure that I share them with you as they come out.
Information from, uh, Tall Cop on, uh, uh, drug and alcohol abuse and, uh, abuse. And he's a motivational speaker that, uh, goes all over and, uh, with, it sounds like a very good program. So I got to remember to show up for that in September.
This is the Pipestone Area Coalition that had gotten grant dollars. Danielle helped me out here three years ago, approximately three years ago, two years ago, at least three years ago. Yeah. And they work all three, it's, um, the Pipestone Area Coalition, the Pipestone Performing Arts Center, Public Health. And I'm not really sure what this logo is here.
I think it's grant money through Southwest Health and Human Services is where the money comes from.
Okay. And they have the coalition and then they just deal with youth substance abuse and alcohol.
Good. Okay, any other closing comments? Well, we got a lot going on this weekend. We've got, uh, prom coming up. And, and also the Senior Citizens Belgium Waffle Feed. And, uh, so it could be a busy, uh, end of the month. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and motion carries. Thank you.